Hey. We are here to do some studying with Matthew Gary. Matt Gary will be joining us in just a moment. No momento, por favor. That's all I know. Hey Clay, welcome. Getting ready to study. And we are... There's Matt. It's you. Says it's adding.
There we go.
There you are.
Hey. How's it going?
Good, it's going well.
Good.
Let me just share this over to Grape Beer Adventure.
Okidoki.
And I will be ready to go. Are you showing me that it's actually cold over there?
Yeah, it was got a little cold this morning. It was so windy that my fence blew over last night. And I got to use some of my really, really stellar, you know, carpentry skills. The fence is back up, but just don't look at it or...
It sounds about right.
Yeah, yeah. Not one of my skills is carpentry, but I try.
All that matters.
Yeah, I have a fence still, sort of.
So the kids are like contained?
Right, yeah. I like to... It's... We live in suburban Denver, so like the neighborhood where we live is all... Everybody's got a fence, so I guess they figure better neighbors with fences than fighting over whatever. I don't know. But, but yeah, it's nice. You can just put the little ones out in the back and the fence, they're all fenced in and they can just tear around. You don't have to worry about them too much.
Yeah. We have, um, we have like a part fence in the beginning and like in the front of our house. Clay says that he keeps his children in containers as well.
Yes, yeah.
He's my buddy from New Hampshire. He does a fishing podcast.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of fun. I was on it once and I actually owe Clay a little bit of, um... If you can just give me one moment, go now.
Yeah, take your time.
It's April break, so...
You need a container to put that child in, so, uh...
I do need a container. I thought I had, but... She's like, "Oh, mommy's on, uh, on doing a video. Let's go down there right now."
Yeah.
Okay, I'm all set and ready to go. I have shared this. We will let everybody know. I'm Amanda from Grape Beer Adventure, which is basically a podcast type platform. But I also do a lot of other stuff. I'm playing around a lot on Instagram. And that guy right there is Matt Gary. He, uh, he has beer in his blood, basically.
That's right, yeah. Both in genetics and consumption. Can't say that joke enough. But yeah, I'm a beer nerd, professional beer nerd, former brewer, current beer educator, I guess you could say.
And that's what we're doing here. We are getting some beer education.
Yes, yeah. So today, so last week, we talked a little bit about just what, what it's all about and why. And this week, we're just gonna kind of dive in. So going from the syllabus, where... Whoa, let me ask you. Did you get your supplies? Did you get your books? Do you have your study materials? Are you getting them, sort of?
So, yes.
Okay.
But I downloaded them as a PDF because it was like 92 pages for each of the things. And I was like, "I can't kill those trees or spend money on the ink."
Right, yeah. I sent, I sent my... Yeah, you can use PDF, whatever works for you. I sent mine to like Kinko's or something like that, some printing service and had them printed out. But that's just because I'm old fashioned and can't read off screens and stuff, so... But any case, good, good job. Homework assignment 100%, well done.
Thanks.
So, um, so moving forward, keep studying your styles, your quantities, your SRM, ABV and IBU for, uh, for each of the styles. And then three commercial examples for each. But, um, so keeping and serving, let's dive in. Keeping and serving beer. Um, so this is about, they say it's about 25% of the exam. And, um, there's, the exam is about 142 fill-in-the-blanks. Uh, there's a, actually a sample exam on the cistron.org website you can download. Uh, I wouldn't say, yeah, I mean, can use it to study now, but I would say let's study and then, then test what you know afterwards and kind of... But, um, 142 fill-in-the-blanks and I think it's like some of those are...
Do they give you a word bank?
No, no. You have to, you have to pull the word bank from your brain, unfortunately, so... But I think it's like...
That's not where I'll be pulling it.
Okay, somewhere else then. Wherever it works, whatever works, so... But like 100, there's like 185 like individual blanks that you gotta fill in. And about 25% of those will be on keeping and serving beer. So it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a significant portion of the exam. There's usually one essay question about keeping and serving. And on the, uh, on the practice exam, uh, the question is, "Discuss how packaging and handling influenced the development of light struck flavor in beer. Include steps retailers might take to protect beer from developing this flavor attribute for various package type." So they just kind of want you to go into detail, like a page, page-long sort of thing on talking about light strike and different ways to prevent it and how you can perceive it and, you know, the whole deal. So that's just kind of giving you a top-line idea of why we're looking at all this stuff and what it is. So, so jumping into it, um, basically, um, first thing is the three-tier system, which I'm sure you're familiar with. Most of our people here are probably familiar that in the United States, we have since prohibition, um, a middleman sort of organization, a distributor. So you have your, your supplier, your brewery, um, they produce the beer. And by law, uh, they have to send it to a third-party distributor, a wholesaler, who then distributes it out to, um, to retail. Retail is any kind of grocery store, liquor store, restaurant, any place that sells or serves beer or alcohol.
Okay, so now there's some like cop caveats to that.
Mm-hmm, yep, absolutely.
Are those covered in this as well? Like, do we need to know the quantity of barrels? Because I know here in Maine, they can self-distribute.
You won't need to know exact... Yeah, it's, it's different for every state. So you won't need to know exact. Just know that there are exceptions and what, what are those exceptions? So self-distribution, there's breweries that can self-distribute. I think in, in Illinois and Chicago, they can do something like up to 60,000 barrels or something like that. I may have the number wrong, but it's, it's significant, whereas in Maine, I think it's quite a bit less. Um, but know that the Brewers Association is a nonprofit organization that has, um, a group of people out trying to push these, uh, these laws, push back against, uh, some of the existing laws and allow breweries to do some self-distribution. However, wholesalers, distributors are one of the biggest lobbying groups in the nation. I think they're like number three in dollars spent.
Really?
And, uh, yeah.
They've got a lot to lose if everybody can start doing their own stuff and...
And there are benefits... Go ahead, sorry.
Isn't there laws around, like, once you get signed with a distributor, it's like really difficult to actually get out from under them?
It is, yeah. So basically, um, you, they have in each marketplace, um, they have a monopoly of your product. Um, so there can't be two distributors carrying your beer if you're a supplier.
Okay, quick before you move on.
Sure.
What it, can you, so if you are carried by a distributor, can, and you're still small enough to self-distribute, can you do both or do you have to go through?
You can self-distribute, um, in one geographic area around your brewery, basically. Um, and I'm, and maybe just in your state. Um, but once you go out of state, you would have to go through, um, a...
So let's say like a brewery in Portland is small enough that they can distribute their own beer. But they've decided to, um, use a distributor. And then they brew this like one-off that's not really big enough to send to a distributor. Can they also sell that in that Portland region or do they have to go through the distributor?
They would have to go through the distributor if they have a relationship with the distributor. If they're not self-distributing, um, so it would have to go... They could serve it on their own premise, uh, in their own taproom, they could serve it. And, uh, but they would have to, uh, go through a distributor if they already have that relationship. So it's, it's, it's complicated and it's different for, from city to city and state to state. Um, so there's probably, you know, hundreds of different rules out there. But know in general that there are exceptions. There, the other one, so there's self-distribution, but also there's the brew pub model where you can actually brew on-site and, and sell on-site. But you can't distribute from a brew pub. And there's, there's different laws within that as well. You can, you can nitpick. And, you know, some, some states allow you to, to brew the beer off-site as long as you kind of carbonate it and package it in kegs, um, at the, the, the brew pub that qualifies. You don't necessarily have to make the beer there, but you have to do some sort of packaging there.
And is that why places here in Maine have like the two doors? Like if they're a brew pub, but they have a separate entrance, then they can...
Yeah, that's another, yeah. That's an, that's another way to get, kind of get around, um, the, the distribution. And then also, um, a different, yeah, it allows you to sell packaged goods as well as draft beer. So those rules, I'm not quite clear on, but I know especially in Portland, there's definitely, um, different models out there where everything from, um, you know, you can, places that serve food and sell packaged to, you know, getting, um, growlers, to buying cases, to just drinking on-site. So there's, there's a lot of different versions of what works. And, uh, like I said, each state is gonna be different. They won't ask you specifics on the exam about that information. Just know kind of the basic, uh, the three tiers, the supplier, um, the wholesaler, and then the retailer. And then, um, the, the common exceptions to that being brew pubs and kind of the own premise, uh, the, the taproom sort of model. There is, um, let's see, get my notes here. They might ask you a little bit about, uh, the economics of beer and then how that pans out. Who's, uh, how, how does that price get to the end consumer? So essentially, um, the brewery will take into account all of its expenses and, um, basically, um, mark it up about 35% from their, their, their expenses. Yeah, their margins. Um, then the wholesaler will, will do another, you know, 24 to 30% to the retailer. And then the retailer, um, probably around that 25 to 30% as well, too. So each, each step takes, takes the, uh, um, takes the money where they can get it. Which is interesting because you look at breweries that skip, uh, skip the wholesaler. They're selling directly from the brewery to the consumer, um, and they're selling at, at retail prices. So they're collecting...
I mean, it seems like that's the way to go.
Right, so there, there's two reasons for that. One is, um, they can and, and they, they can take all that, that margin for themselves. But the other is, um, most brewers are also, um, selling out in the marketplace. So their retail partners, um, you know, a brewery, Joe's Brewery is, is selling to the bar down the street. Uh, he doesn't want to undercut that bar because that bar, bar owner, manager, tender will be kind of pissed because they, his customers are gonna be going to the brewery to buy the beer rather than, than going to his bar. So, um, there's some, um, it's, it's just an interesting sort of fact, uh, as to why those prices are like they are, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It makes sense. It's, as a consumer, sucks. But it makes sense, you know, that they're trying to... Everybody needs to be able to get some money off it or there's, there's no sense of doing it. You know, it's always interesting trying to explain that to a child. Because she's like thinking about doing her own business and everything. "Well, if this costs this much, we gotta sell it for this much to actually make some money." But then if you put in all these extra steps, it's like, oh, gosh darn.
Yeah, and the distributor was put into place to protect consumers, um, and protect, uh, retail business too, um, from big breweries pretty much owning the trade. So if you go to Europe, they have a model, um, that's a tied house model. Basically, that means that the brewery will, will sponsor or have some ownership in each of the retail locations. Um, and as a part of that trade is that their, their products are featured or specific to those, those locations. So, um, a lot of, you know, in Great Britain, in England, in, in Europe, in, uh, in Czech Republic, it's like that as well, too. So, um, so here, you know, basically...
So wait, so what you're saying is like, here we can go to Navarre and we can kind of get like everything that they can get their hands on. But over there, it's like partnership, so you have to go to specific bars to get specific beers?
Correct, right, so...
Well, that makes the adventure a lot more tedious.
Right, well, there are places and it's changing a bit. There are places, there are, there are new brewers that are, that are selling their beer. And there are different models, um, retailers that are selling a wide variety of beers as well. Um, it doesn't necessarily mean that every place, uh, is a tied house, um, but a large majority of them are. Um, and it impacts what you're gonna be able to buy there. So often, you're not gonna get a full lineup.
If you are like a tied, is it tied, like...
Tied, yeah, like tied, tied to, uh, tie your shoes, yeah.
Okay, so if it's a tied bar, then, and you're the brewery, you only, and you have that relationship with some, does that limit where you're allowed to also be?
Well, you know, you could, your product could be at a, you know, say if, you know, for example, in the Czech Republic, um, there's a lot of different big brewers there, but Pilsner Quell is one of them. Um, and there are several different Pilsner Quell bars, many, many that you can go in Prague. However, you can also go to a cool craft beer bar that has a lot of local, locally-made beers, craft beers. But they also serve Pilsner Quell there too, just because they love the beer and there's a lot of history to it and it's part of, part of their passion. Um, but they'll serve a lot of local craft too. So they're not tied necessarily, they're not only able to serve beer in the tied house, but, uh, the big, bigger breweries that have those resources will use it as a way to, to sell their beer. So that's, you're, you're seeing that more and more often here in the States too, where, um, where breweries will start opening tasting rooms in Las Vegas or in Chicago or... So, uh, Ballast Point is opening a place in Chicago that's gonna be selling their beers. And Goose Island has a few. So there's different breweries that are doing that here as well. So you can be assured if you go to a Ballast Point Brew Pub, you're probably not gonna see a whole lot of the, uh, the competitive brands being sold there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, probably gonna be mostly, uh, Ballast Point. So, so there, there's, there's examples of that here too, um, but, um, it's, it's limited to the number of places you can have it here. Whereas in Europe, um, it's wide open.
Okay.
So, so yeah, so kind of interesting and impacts us. Um, another, let's see, another really fascinating part of this is taxation and how we're taxed and how beers are taxed.
Sounds fascinating.
This is really fun stuff, but it may be on the exam and kind of interesting to know because, um, it used to be, uh, you know, there's been a, a tax break recently. Uh, you may have heard about this. Um, and basically, it's the federal excise tax. So there's federal tax, there's state tax, and then there's personal income tax. Federal excise tax is charged to the brewers, to the suppliers, um, and that's based on barrelage. That's how much beer you make. A barrel is 31 gallons. So any brewery that produces under 2 million barrels a year, uh, which is the majority of individual breweries in the country, I think, but there's over 6,000 of them. But very few create more than 2 million barrels. I think Sam Adams is roughly right around there, or Boston Beer Company, rather. But, uh, for the first 60,000 barrels, you're charged $3.50 on the first 50,000, uh, 60,000 barrels. And I think it used to be $8, um, dollars a barrel or $7 a barrel. So basically cut in half, which is a significant saving. Um, but if you're only producing 1,000 barrels a year, it's not that much. But still, it, every bit helps. Um, and then beyond that, every barrel beyond the 60,000 is $16 per barrel, a federal excise tax. So...
So that's why there's like breweries that stop, like expanding at some point, right?
Sure, yeah, I mean, that, that's a consideration to take, yeah, to be, to sit underneath that 60,000. Granted, one barrel over, if you're doing 60,001 barrels, that one, you're, you're paying $16 more. So you have to figure, um, that that's a consideration for sure. How much more are we gonna do 120,000? What does that, what implication does that have on our taxes? And that's often why when breweries grow, they don't just grow a little bit at a time. They, they make a big jump in terms of volume in order to, to make those numbers work out so that the, that those taxes, extra taxes and other things, in turn, uh, you know, they're gonna get quantities of scale or, um, you know, value from that scale. So, but the big brewers, anything over 200,000 barrels, or 2 million barrels, rather, um, is, is taxed differently. So, um, the first 6 million barrels for those big brewers, they're taxed $16 per barrel. And for anything over 6 million barrels, it's $18 per barrel. So, um, InBev or, um, any of those big, big breweries are gonna be taxed at that higher rate.
So you say InBev. Now, InBev is like a thing, uh, monster that can't, holds all kinds of different breweries. Are all of them brought together in this federal taxation stuff?
So any...
Or is it individual breweries within the umbrella?
Sure, yeah, it's any beer that's produced in the States, um, I believe is how it works. And so those, that production, um, by those, so there, there'll be an umbrella company over. So for Miller Coors, you'll have different breweries within that. You'll have the Miller Brewing Company, the Coors Brewing Company. And they'll be taxed, um, for the production of each of those breweries, um, that they have here in the country, um, for the, that production. And that'll be an...
But are they added together?
They, yeah.
Even if they buy like a small, like Wicked Weed was bought and they're tiny. But now that they're underneath this, um, umbrella that holds all kinds of beer, or do they, are they taxed at a higher rate?
I believe so. I believe it's an aggregate for, um, the entire company, um, the, the overarching owner of that brewery. I'm, I'm not sure exactly how it breaks out and how they handle that. That's a good question, um, but, uh, beyond my scope of knowledge, but I, I, I believe that it's a...
So you have homework for this week.
I, I do too, thanks, thanks. I'll, I'll look into that. Let me, let me make a note here. Okay, got it. Yeah, so, uh, but yeah, interesting question though. I, I'd like to know how that breaks out, how that impacts, um, those breweries. Because their production is, is pretty tiny as a, as a percentage of the overall production of those bigger breweries. So, um, curious to know how that works out. I would imagine that, that, that it's in, in aggregate for, for the, the, the parent company, but...
Right.
I don't know. So, good question. So, uh, sales tax, that is, that's levied on the wholesaler. So the concept behind the, the, the wholesale's taxation was that they would be a responsible kind of caretaker of, uh, the, the alcohol in the marketplace. So basically, uh, it's like a sin tax, so, um, there would be incentive for them to, um, control and be responsible, um, sellers of beer in the marketplace. But that, that state sales tax is, is through the wholesaler. So, um, hey Malcolm, uh, so, uh, but, uh, so self-distribution, they'll have to pay, uh, a state tax as well if they're being self-distributed. If they're acting as the distributor, as the wholesaler, they'll pay that tax. And then...
That makes sense that I didn't even think about the fact that they would have to, uh, take on that responsibility. And then so they're selling it right from their brewery, then they probably take the next level too of the sales tax, right?
Right, yeah.
Excise, sales, all of that would be under the brewery. And so that would be one of the reasons why they sell it at the higher price, that's the reason, right?
Sure, their, their tax, yeah, they're, they'll, they'll pay a little extra tax, but they won't, um, they won't have to, uh, lose that margin that, that the wholesaler is taking. So, so yeah, there's, there's a little added expense, um, but it, it's, uh, still a greater volume of, of cash taken in as a result. But, um, and then of course, everybody pays individual income tax. So each business or individual, uh, the retailer, uh, the, the wholesaler and the supplier will all pay their own income tax. So that's, that's the exciting world of taxes, um, to my knowledge and, and to what we need to know for this exam, um, you know, to go in much deeper, yeah.
So there's been a whole talk, talk about tariffs and stuff on metal...
Yeah, on aluminum.
Aluminum.
Yeah.
Some kind of metal-y substance.
Yeah, metal-y substance.
And so does that, yeah, metal-y substance, yeah, yes, those, that's the official term that I've been hearing.
Yeah.
Um, does that have any, any effect on, um, any of these things at all?
So it won't have an effect on the taxation. It will have an impact on the costs of goods to make a product. So if you're thinking about, um, uh, I think, uh, you know, I heard something that maybe about a penny a can impact on, on, on the overall cost, which would be handing over maybe 10 cents to the consumer on each can filled. But, um, so if you're making, you know, 5,000 cans, uh, you know, that's not a huge impact, but it's substantial if you're working on a small budget. If you're making, you know, 10 million cans, that adds up pretty quick too and is a pretty significant impact on, on, uh, the cost of goods, uh, for any brewer. So depending on what your production size, obviously, it'll scale and the, the dollar amount that that'll impact. But overall, across the industry, it has the, the potential to impact, um, the price. And usually that will be, um, at retail, well, we'll, we'll feel it. So the consumer's gonna pay for it, probably, yeah.
The brewery will feel it and then they'll hand off that feeling to the distributor, who will hand off that feeling to the retailers, who will hand off that feeling to us.
Exactly, yeah.
We'll just cry into our beer.
Right, right. We'll be drinking bottles again instead or something, who knows?
Bring back the bottles.
So, you know, it's funny because we, there's an, there's a cut in the excess tax, which is a savings. But then, um, you know, cans are pretty popular, especially in Maine these days. If you're not brewing beer in cans or packaging beer in cans, then, then you're, uh, you're missing out on, on some, on the trend. But it's also good quality too. It's, uh, no light strike and less oxygen ingress. But, um, but yeah, that's gonna be, uh, a trade-off for that. You know, you, you save some from the excise tax cut, but you lose some eventually, if this goes through, um, on some, uh, on some increased aluminum prices. So, um, so yeah, interesting, good question.
Thanks. I'm just so full of like...
You are.
Things that don't really matter, but I need to know.
Need to know. These are important questions. Those, that keep you up at night, right?
Yes. What about the tariffs?
The tariffs. Yeah, well, yeah, if it's... Ask away.
So we're just about at the end of our time today. And so I'm looking, I, I found a, I think I got this from my friends over, um, at Foundation at one point. They shared with me a syllabus they had. So I'm looking at that and following along with everything you said. You probably sent it to me too, but, um, I don't know. I lose track of my head.
Oh, you got it, so it doesn't matter.
It's here today.
Yeah.
Oh, you meant the paper. Yeah, that's a...
Right, right.
So it looks like, um, for the purchasing and the accepting, we've gotten through the three tier in the taxation. So next week, we'll be looking at assessing your beer shipment, which is a big deal, um, as a retailer.
Right, so yeah, we'll go into all stuff about, you know, date coding, uh, physical, physical condition of the beer, the temperature, um, and, uh, all the details there. So fascinating stuff too, but really important stuff, um, and...
Now, I have a quick question about the date coding. Is it necessary? Like, is, do you have to have it on there? Because I feel like I find some that don't.
No, there's no law, uh, there, there's no law for it. And in fact, there's a huge, uh, variety of ways that, that beers are coded. I find the most useful one to know is, is, uh, the date that it was packaged. Uh, because then you know how old it's been, how old it is, how long it's been on the shelf. But a lot of these places will have, uh, a best-by date. Um, and usually that's, I mean, perfectly valid and, and done by, um, a panel of samplers at a brewery to determine at what point does the flavor of the beer start to diminish and, and which point they recommend that you not drink it because it doesn't taste like it should. Doesn't mean that you can't drink it, just you probably shouldn't because it doesn't taste as good as it does fresh. But, you know, I, I was at the liquor store the other day and, and there was a brewery, um, that had, uh, there, there was one that was codated, uh, June 22nd, 2018. And the next package next to it was February 12th, 2018. So I wasn't sure at first that, uh, which, which was which. Was it a born-on date or is it an expiry date? But, so knowing, having the two side by side, and one's in the future, so it's May 28th, knowing that, that the other passed. knowing that that the other package was pass code, but you you know, as a consumer, it's it's kinda hard to know. Exactly, if you were just seeing that package on the shelf, you don't know, you have to go online and search what's going on, what what's the code dating rules for this this brewery and that brewery. So we'll go over some of that, some of the common ways that people code their beers and which beers do it in kind of really weird eccentric ways as well too, so and how to decipher all that.
Definitely some eccentricity, eccentricness?
Yes, that, some strange stuff going on, yeah.
Strange stuff, that's better.
Eccentricity, eccentricity, I think is.
Eccentricity.
Yes, to say it with a bit of a British accent. They are, I don't, I don't use many of them, I pretty much stick to like ten or twelve and kinda rotate them.
That's it, that's just, that's.
But yeah, that's works mostly, mostly.
Perfect.
Well, cool, in the meantime, so next week, we'll we'll talk about, yeah, we'll talk about those beer dates. What we may get into, depending on time, we'll get into serving alcohol and and responsible service and and then maybe into beer storage and how to properly store beer and the impacts. But in the meantime, this next week, get on your your BJCP quantities, start studying those. Look at German and pills, sorry, German and Czech beers, maybe start there.
German and Czech beers.
Yeah, look at the quants and the styles, so know your German, German pills, ABV, IBU and SRM and and three different examples of that and then kinda work through this, you know, pick a dozen different ones and and trying to start memorizing those, so that the sooner you start on that.
So we'll be drinking Pilsners and this.
We can.
Beers and Pilsners this weekend.
Sure, yeah, do it, do it up, yeah.
I will.
The homework.
If my husband was watching this, which he doesn't, because he doesn't have the social media stuff. But if he was, I'd be like, baby, we're drinking German this weekend.
So yeah, next week, tell me the difference between a Czech premium pills or premium lager, like a Czech pills, a Bohemian pills and a Bavarian pills, that'll be a good good little exercise for you.
Oh, gosh, okay, so Czech slash Bohemian, you say?
So, yeah, yeah, and then German slash Bavarian, so.
Hold on.
Uh oh. So yeah. Pilsner Quell, perfect example, it's the definition of Bohemian pills and then so I don't know what you can get for a German pills over there. Maybe like.
And so it'd be a German slash Bavarian?
Yeah, so maybe like Bitburger or. Let's see here, oops.
I like, I know I like Bitburgers.
Yeah, Bitburger's good, Pauline or Troggs, you probably can get Troggs Sunshine.
We can't get Troggs here.
No, you can't get Troggs, okay, never mind then.
Oh, but we're going down, he says no Googling. We're going down to Connecticut, so maybe we'll come across them, so you said Troggs Sunshine?
Yep.
All right, yeah, we're making the trek down to New Haven and we're swinging into Treehouse for the first time, it's pretty exciting.
Cool, very cool.
I might get a little bit of my beer geek cred back because I was like, have you gone?
Yeah, no, I've never been either, so I just I don't have any cred either, so.
No, none, you've got none.
Take pictures and then I'll be able to pretend like I'm visiting as well. I've seen a picture of it once, yeah.
Awesome, thank you so much, and if you guys wanna follow along at home, go out and get some beers. The Czech slash Bohemian Pilsner versus the German slash Bavarian Pilsner.
Yeah, and we'll we'll kinda talk about the differences next week and we'll talk a little bit more about keeping and serving beer. Get into the fun stuff.
Those, those date codes.
Yeah, that is so much fun, I can't wait.
All right, thank you so much, we'll see you next week.
Thank you, all right, see you soon, bye, cheers.